Good morning and welcome to the regular session of Elgin County Council. It is February the twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four, nine a.m. and I will call this meeting to order. I'm going to ask Blaine Parkin to assume the meeting at this point.
Thank you, Warden Ketchum. Given the recent circumstances, we've asked our counterpart at the municipality of West Elgin to nominate or to have their deputy mayor fill in for councillor Latham, given the circumstances. So I will ask Ms. Helyer to meet me at the podium, please.
I trust that Telly, having been elected or appointed to the office of county councillor in the county of Elgin, do so only promise to declare that, one, I will truthfully, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. Two, I have not received and will not received any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. Three, I would disclose any pecuniary interests, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Mistful Conflict of Interest Act. Four, I'll be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles the Third, and make this solemn declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Congratulations, councillor Telly. Welcome to the horseshoe.
Your chair, thank you so much.
Moving on with our agenda, first up is the adoption of the minutes.
Resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four be adopted.
Need a mover and secondor, please. Councillor Noble will move and councillor Hens will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And I was remiss. Welcome back, Catherine. I should have mentioned that off the top of the meeting. Good to have you back.
Thank you.
We look for good things. I would remind members of any disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. I see none noted. Next, moving into committee of the whole.
Resolved that we do now move into committee of the whole.
Do I have a mover and secondor for that? Deputy Warden Jones, did I see councillor Noble? Seconding that. All in favor? That is carried. Brings us to section six, reports of councils, outside boards and staff, six one from the Director of Human Resources, HR Policy two point one zero, alternative and flexible work arrangements. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning. And through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. Before council today is a redeveloped, sorry, non-union HR policy titled Alternative and Flexible Work Arrangements. To ensure inclusivity, all non-union staff were provided the opportunity to provide their feedback on what options would be most valued within such a policy. The executive leadership team reviewed the policy extensively to ensure it would be suitable across all service areas. And best practices were also reviewed, including a look at what neighboring and other progressive employers were offering at this time. And although many surrounding municipalities are trialing or have moved to a four-day work week, we collectively felt that this would not work across the majority of county service areas at this time, and much of the staff feedback agreed. So flexible work options are currently a significant recruitment and retention issue across all sectors and implementing this policy is anticipated to assist the county in recruiting and retaining qualified non-union staff. The policy provides a few options for alternative work arrangements, knowing that there is no one-size-fits-all approach, given the diversity of staff and service requirements. The intent is to provide varied options that will only be approved when suitable for the roles and departments. As stated within the report and throughout the policy, operational and customer service requirements will always come first, and there must never be a reduction in service related to flexible work arrangements. The newly developed policy continues to address the intent of the prior overtime and lieu and alternative worker arrangements policies that were approved by council a little over a year ago. And the intent of those were to ensure there was a cap on lieu time bank so that these amounts could never reach an unmanageable amount or create an unfunded liability. The newly drafted policy does not allow the bank to grow beyond twenty-one hours at any given time, so that's up to three days of hours, and it promotes the intended behavior of planning time off when we know we're going to have to be working additional hours, whether it's meetings outside of regular business or workload increases. And our new HCM system will include a cap that won't allow individuals to bank any more time than the twenty-one hours capped, thus forcing the time to be booked off before any additional hours can be accrued. Department heads are responsible for ensuring fair and consistent policy application while prioritizing service delivery, and all alternative schedules will need to be pre-approved. So true overtime should only occur in extenuating circumstances. The policy we recommend rescinding was developed following the cyber event that we experienced, where some staff worked excessive hours. In future emergency or extenuating circumstances, HR will be closely monitoring staff hours. Ensuring health and safety of staff is the top priority. HR will ensure accurate tracking of time worked and that appropriate breaks are taken. And we recommend paying staff per the Clearly Established Employment Standards Act overtime policies, whereby non-management staff who work in excess of forty-four hours per week will receive payment at time and a half for those hours. So the recommendation before council is to adopt the newly developed policy and rescind the prior HR policy two point one zero, as well as HR policy two point two one covering non-union overtime. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report, Amy. Does anyone have any questions for staff? Okay, it sounds like you've done a pretty good job of satisfying people's expectations, so thank you. Ready for a question?
Resolved that county council adopt the new HR policy two point one zero, alternative and flexible work arrangements, as presented on February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four, and that county council rescind HR policy two point two one, overtime and lieu time.
Do we have a mover and secondor for that? Councillor Widner and councillor Cookett will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Section six point two, Director of Homes and Senior Services, Homes Emergency Plans, Elgin County and Dutton Cooperative Childcare Center, Inc. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. So the report before you today is to seek council approval for execution of an agreement with the Corporation of the County of Elgin, specifically Bobier Villa and the Dutton Cooperative Childcare Center for the use of each other's facilities for the purpose of a safe receiving area in the event of a temporary evacuation is required. So both long-term care home legislation and the daycare legislation require that both facilities have plans, emergency plans in place that comply with their regulatory requirements. And those requirements include the identification of a safe evacuation location, the use of which needs to be arranged in advance of an emergency. So staff at both facilities have toured both Bobier Villa and the Dutton Childcare Center to determine both the feasibility and the suitability of temporary evacuation for both. In consultation with the county solicitor, I've reached consensus with the childcare representatives for a draft agreement which was included in this report to support temporary evacuation and emergency plans for both facilities. Staff do recommend that council authorize execution of the MOU to support emergency planning requirements for both Bobier Villa and the Childcare Center. And the recommendations are before you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that report, Michelle. Does anyone have any questions? Seen none? We'll now have the question.
Resolved that the report titled Homes Emergency Plans, Elgin County and Dutton Cooperative Childcare Center Incorporated, dated February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four, be received and filed, and that council authorize the Director of Homes and Senior Services to execute the memorandum of understanding for emergency planning with Corporation of the County of Elgin and Dutton Cooperative Childcare Center Incorporated.
Do we have a mover and secondor for that? Deputy Warden Jones will move, councillor Hens will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Moving on to six three, from the Chief Administrative Officer, Clerk. Growth Planning Steering Committee Recommended Terms of Reference. Good morning, Blaine.
Good morning, Warden. And through you two members of council, this is just a short report confirming that the terms of reference that were discussed and adopted by the Growth Planning Steering Committee and being recommended to council for adoption. Those terms of reference were designed with the intent of trying to take a broader, more holistic view on growth throughout the county and giving, aligning with the mandate that council previously adopted and providing some direction to the Growth Planning Steering Committee. So those terms of reference include examining issues, challenges, and opportunities resulting from the province's strategic investments in the region, developing a strategy for managing growth throughout the county, which includes managing the challenges and leveraging the benefits associated with that growth, identifying key infrastructure needs in the region to facilitate growth, working to ensure that the county, the local municipal partners, the city of St. Thomas, as well as the provincial and federal governments, work collectively for the benefit for the region and all its residents and businesses, promoting a holistic view to the planning and coordination of growth throughout the county, demonstrating county council's commitment to responsible and sustainable growth that considers both financial and environmental factors, and working to ensure that the investment in growth is proportional to the benefit derived from growth, and conversely, that those who benefit from growth proportionately invest. So with that, Warden Ketchum, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report, Blaine. Does anyone have any questions? Everyone's comfortable with that? So far, it's been relatively easy this morning. Okay, Catherine, please.
Resolved that the council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin received the report entitled Growth Planning Steering Committee Recommended Terms of Reference, dated February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four, and that council adopts the terms of reference as recommended by the Growth Planning Steering Committee.
Do we have a mover and secondor for that? Councillor Jaguerre and councillor Cookett will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Which brings us to six four, the Director of Financial Services. Treasury regarding the two thousand and twenty four proposed county budget. This one may not be as easy.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. I wait for the presentation. I'm happy to bring forward the two thousand and twenty four budget to council for approval today from the Budget Committee on behalf of the Budget Committee and staff. Our first slide next is the schedule that we went through. So we started our budget process in September with the Budget Committee and they reviewed the budget survey that we sent out to the public. So that was our first public engagement opportunity this year, and that went from September thirteenth to October thirteenth. At that time, the leadership team during October was also busy working on their budgets behind the scenes and taking into consideration the information that was gathered through that survey. In October, the Budget Committee met to review the results of that survey and a preliminary look at the risks and opportunities that we were facing for the two thousand and twenty four budget. In November, the Budget Committee met and heard the Engineering Services Capital Plan, an in-depth review of that capital plan was given. So we do look at our budget for ten years, so capital and operating, and the capital plan was provided along with their two thousand and twenty four operational plan as well. November twenty eighth, we met again with the Budget Committee and all of the departments then provided their presentation to the Budget Committee through a draft release of their budget package. In January, the Budget Committee met again and we talked about some changes that we had heard about because there was still some outstanding things from the November meeting. And we also talked about some of the items that were still outstanding. So those rates and ratios were then reviewed and we brought forward our preliminary amount of three point seven nine percent as our increase for two thousand and twenty four. Then we went for a period of public consultation again, where we held another public meeting on February thirteenth from five to seven, where the public was welcome to come and provide their input to our budget. And there was also a survey online where we received many comments related to the budget, approximately thirty-five comments were received. And then today, we are here with the budget, the final presentation. So from the public engagement, the budget survey, as I said, was from September thirteenth to October thirteenth. It was posted online and available in person. We heard twenty, two hundred and twenty individuals responded, and ninety-one percent of these individuals identified as residential individuals that would fall under the residential rate. The top three priorities that were identified by respondents that we should focus on was social services and housing, long-term care, and transportation and roads. Next, acceptable ways to increase spending were to keep taxation between zero percent and four percent, lean on efficiencies and funding, and take out some long-term debt if needed, but that would be a last resort. Fewer tax dollars should be spent on grants and support for community programs and events, cultural services, and discretionary funding, and many of the respondents wanted to have more information about that. So how did we respond to the survey? Last year, the Consumer Price Index October over October was three point three percent, and that's the percentage that many of our contracts are based on. So that does fuel a lot of our budget process, knowing that we have to meet that budget target, that target of CPI. So with the proposed tax rate this year, we're looking at a three point seven nine percent. So we're in, we're in the vicinity of the three point three percent. I provided the last three years in comparator for the budget and the CPI October over October. So in two thousand and twenty one, we were at a two point nine increase in our tax rate with a CPI of a point seven percent. In two thousand and twenty two, we were at a one point six eight percent increase with CPI at four point nine. And in two thousand and twenty three, we're at three point seven five percent with a CPI of six point five. And this year, three point seven nine with a three point three percent CPI. So we haven't had a lot of years where we are extremely over that amount. And how did the budget respond to the survey? Further information, financial. Council were very engaged in the budget process this year, and many did attend the budget meetings throughout the budget process, so that's helps them stay informed and makes our life a little easier as we go through this process so that they understand some of the pressures and are engaged in that at the Budget Committee level. Line items were reviewed by all departments, increases lower than the CPI increase, which we see that in several areas, signal that an efficiency in that area has been achieved and in order to contain increases on that line item. And in appendix one of the budget document that you have, it outlines line by line the details for each department, so that if you have interest in a particular department, you can go through that and determine where the savings or cost increases were related. Departmental presentations highlighted this year that in engineering, we had a revised capital plan of twenty-three million dollars. That was actually a decrease from the prior ten-year plan. We had, I believe, twenty-six million dollars in there for two thousand and twenty four, and we were able to decrease it down to two thousand and twenty three by changing that plan a little bit. The fire school has one new full-time, fully offset by revenue person, so that person will be fully compensating, so it will still remain as a revenue-neutral ad. And since this, since this was introduced, council has approved that person be hired, so that process is in progress at this time. Planning Department, we've introduced the shared service, so we're looking to hire one full-time person in order to provide shared services for our municipality so that we can build that department and also assist in the fact that planners, there is a shortage of planners out there and everyone is struggling to hire that particular in that particular area. Human resources changed the scope of one existing position, so they did have a position that was doing a shared service with middlesex, and that position is no longer required. So that scope changed in order to provide a little bit of more expertise for negotiation purposes and in order to assist Amy with some of her challenges in that department. Facilities are still following their building, a condition assessment that we did a couple of years ago. So the Terrace Lodge rebuild is still underway under that department with debt expected to be incurred in two thousand and twenty five. And our elevator project is nearing completion, which is due in two thousand and twenty four. One of the other significant areas, we added about one point three million dollars of service to the ambulance services, and this is a shared service, which is partially offset costs, those costs are partially offset eventually by the province, who does pick up fifty percent, but that is one year behind, and then also by our municipal partners, the city of St. Thomas in that area, so. So some other line items that represent shared services are the public health unit, ambulance, and social services. And in these budget areas, these are externally legislated to us, so we have external partners with contracted services. So in most cases, those budgets are prescribed to us, things that are required that they need to meet the legislative requirements of their service. An overarching review of the departmental discretionary funding and non-discretionary funding was conducted this year by the Budget Committee, and that was at the request of the survey, plus to make sure that we were focusing on our core needs for the county of Elgin, and that is in appendix two of the budget document, so you're able to see all of the items that were reviewed. And as we went into this process, we received many requests for funding from external groups in two thousand and twenty four, and as council knows, these requests were forwarded to the Budget Committee for review and consideration. Discretionary items, so in appendix two, as I mentioned, we do have, the discretionary items are outlined for you. And if I can liken this to a discretionary item would be like shopping at Walmart, where you have your grocery aisles, those are your core services, and then you can veer out of those lines and go over to the toy department and maybe the the clothing department and pick up a few extra things. Whereas non-discretionary items are just like shopping at food basics. You have your core items, your food, your milk, your sugar. Those are the things that you need in order to function in your household. So the Budget Committee did review many of the pressures that we have going on into this year, as well as pressures next year and beyond. So non-discretionary items include, in two thousand and twenty five, we show that we have some pressures with funding shortfall of five point one million, and that's in the ten-year plan. If you look at the summary on page two, you'll see that there is a shortfall for two thousand and twenty two and two thousand and twenty six, a shortfall of another approximately five million dollars. This is related in part to the large debt that's coming online for Terrace Lodge, which staff have been preparing for. We have planned to use the compliance premium that the province will be giving us for Terrace Lodge. However, you can still see that we are short in order to meet our obligations in those two years. What could we do with any extra money? We could ensure that we can service our needs and pay our debt. So for instance, if we were to see interest rates come down, that would help us and we could put some more money towards the repayment of the debt. So for instance, if we had another six hundred thousand per year, an additional debt repayment, we would be able to reduce the number of years, probably from about twenty-five years down to fifteen years, and we would save approximately eight million dollars in doing that. This would be timely because approximately in fifteen years, Bobier Villa will be forty years old, and we will be looking at probably the replacement of that facility related to our long-term care needs. In the HR department, for two thousand and twenty four, union negotiations are still ongoing, and these have not settled yet. So we did put in a provision in the two thousand and twenty four budget, and you'll see a discretionary, a non-discretionary item in there for that purpose. However, we're not sure that this is actually the full amount that we will need. We're hopeful, but we're not, we don't know that yet. Recently, we lobbied for more infrastructure funding from the province to assist with the pressures of growth in this community. Yet we heard Minister Flack allude to the fact that in order to make this area successful, we will all have to incur debt, and we don't know what that exactly means at this time. When will that happen? What does that look like? So we don't know, and only thing we can do is try to prepare in advance for whatever that might involve. Some discretionary items that we have are non-core services, outside agency asks that will have and have caused scope creep and expectations. So these are also listed in appendix two. And in two thousand and twenty four, the community came forward with many large asks that were not within our core budget area. And the committee debated but unanimously voted to bring forward the budget without these items included today so that I have not included them as a result. So from the slide, the core, the core large items were the provisions for funding from the hospital in the amount of five hundred thousand and the hospice for three hundred thousand, so these were not included. If we were to add these on to the levy, and that would be either today or in the future, when we don't have the money that we would plan to give away, approximately two percent is what these would cost, our ratepayers. So this is, again, not a core service, and long-term care and Southwest Public Health are already overspent to their funding and do put pressures every year on our Elgin County area. But these are services that are mandated to be supported by the county taxpayer, and so they are within our budget. It is necessary to remain focused on core services, especially during these periods of growth. And it is also important to note that taxpayers are not eligible for tax receipts if they are taxed directly through their property and not, you know, donating that readily to the individual areas. So two items that are still on the agenda for council's consideration, which the committee could not decide upon would be SCORE, which is thirty thousand dollars. Last year, their request was granted at twenty five thousand dollars, but this year they're asking for thirty. And the Saint Thomas Algen Public Arts Gallery, their core service has been supported at thirty thousand. And this year their membership is going up to forty thousand. So they're asking for a ten thousand dollar increase. So these will be two things that today the council will have to determine if they wish to provide funding for those. Twenty twenty three growth. So in twenty twenty three, we we did have a large unexpected growth. And this was related to the commercial area of our tax base. So we're very thankful for those individuals that have found their way to Algen County and have now built their home here and built their businesses here. And these, this does provide us with a large amount for this year in particular. The assessment base grew four point nine percent with two point five percent of this being commercial assessment. And that results in about two point five million dollars. Half of this is a possible at risk is possibly at risk. There, there is potential for assessment re appeal. And until that appeal is completed and known, we do not know whether or not we have set aside enough or maybe too much. So at this point, we've we've chosen the halfway point. So we're suggesting that one point two nine five or one point three million be set aside into a growth into a reassessment reserve that we would not touch until we know the outcome of any reassessment. And then also set aside the other half of that into what we have been doing every year is the growth reserve. So what we've been doing is taking the growth from the prior year, sending it aside into the growth reserve. And then allowing that to flow through as needed into the next year. At this point, the council council has supported that, the growth reserve in order to, in lieu of development charges. We don't have those here at the county. So we have been trying to squirrel away a bit of money here and there in order to support the growth that's coming. And our development charges are compiled and made of municipal core services. So I went back to the D C study that was done by Hampson in twenty twenty one. And services that we can support are services related to highway and transportation, ambulance, library, long term care and provincial offenses. Those were the only ones that they had identified in that report. Currently, there is four million dollars in our growth reserve. And that is in, we only started it in twenty twenty two. It's a very young reserve. However, the first year we put a half a million dollars in there. And then in the second year, we planned to put a point seven mil or seven hundred thousand in. But we did have a large surplus in twenty twenty two. So we did put a lot, put three point five million in there. So that's how we got to our four million dollars. In appendix two, we're just showing here that we did have present the committee with three options for a rate reduction. Three point seven nine shows the growth reserve going to two million with one point two or one point three million set aside in the reassessment reserve. In option two, we allowed half of that growth to flow through to the rate payer, which would have brought down our rate to two point three six, still leaving one point three in the reassessment reserve. But that would then change the growth reserve and it would fall to one point four. Option three, we had reduced it significantly to one percent approximately with only the growth from the current year that was not related to commercial flowing through to to the growth reserve and then all the commercial being released into use for this year. The committee eventually chose option one, feeling that that was a good way to set us up for the future. And it provides some savings to the tax rate payer. They're not, they're not a large amount. But if the additional non municipal costs were were added to this flow, we would not, the rate payer would not see the gain in allowing that to flow through. So we're focusing on our own core core assets. And that in the accounting circles, if we flow this through and we give it away, it's known as a lost opportunity. So that's something that we don't want to, we want to avoid that. And we want to ensure that the value of what we have is something that we have for a long time that we can rely on and use. So currently, we have the budget set at three point seven nine percent for an increase. This puts our levy at forty eight million dollars when the, when the inter, the inflation rate is three point three percent. On the average home, that results in twenty five dollars per hundred thousand of assessment. In the county, the average home is two hundred and thirty nine thousand. So that would be approximately fifty nine dollars and seventy five cents on the average home, approximately sixty dollars. In this scenario, one point three million of growth from the commercial class is being set aside for reassessment. All the growth from all the classes are putting, are being put into the growth reserve. And no new commercial class assessment is flowing into twenty twenty four. So the revenue, this is just an overview of how we're we're receiving our revenue. Forty eight percent of it is coming from taxes. The overall revenue that we will receive is one hundred and one point six million. Twenty nine thousand, twenty nine million is coming from long term care. So there's a lot of user fees and provincial funding in that envelope. Emergency management, which is our ambulance, approximately eleven point five million from our our partners. And then the rest, we have some OCF and and that type of funding that comes in for engineering. In the operating costs, operating expenses are expected to be eighty nine point six million. Seventy six point nine million is for core services. Twelve point seven million is amortization. And that is used to support capital replacement. The capital expenses this year are twenty four point six million. And that is supported in part by the net income and by the amortization. Of course, you see our largest is in roads, which is nineteen million. And then some of our other areas. So as we near the end of the budget process, their rates and ratios are finalized in OPTA, which is the Ontario Property Tax Analysis Group. There's a portal and in advance of the bylaw being struck for council's approval, I have populated OPTA to ensure that the ratios and rates are correct. The landfill ratio for Allen County is prescribed to us and is adjusted by the Minister of Finance. This can happen up until the data is frozen in June. And if it would be changed, we would bring back an additional report with with the effects on the ratios and the rates if and when that happened. Ratios are currently confirmed to pass the upload and therefore are expected to be within the range of fairness for each of the classes. So adjustments are not anticipated. But as I said, the cutoff for that is the end of June, and that was prescribed by the province. And elegant tax rate increase remains at three point seven nine percent to reflect the opti calculated amounts today. The next one is just the ratios. They remain unchanged from the prior year. And the rates today for each of the classes are increasing by the three point seven nine percent as outlined today. So we did have a period of a second public consultation. The draft proposed budget was posted on our website from February eighth to February fifteenth. And we did hold a public meeting on February thirteenth from seven to nine P M. Delegation was received from the hospital and they attended to further discuss options within the budget to fund their M R I campaign. And questions from the on, from the online posted budget document were received and answered by the senior leadership team as it related to their area of expertise. After the public meeting, the county did receive a request for the link to the public feedback survey from Hospice Algen. And multiple respondents then engaged in the survey to provide their support for the county to also fund the hospice campaign. In relation to that survey, thirty four responses were received. And the highlights are the community and cultural services. The budget was too high. They wanted to keep the budget overall lower than three percent. More funding was supposed to be given to land ambulance. And we might, as previously mentioned, we had increased that budget by one point three million this year. Homes to keep the budget increases at or below inflation. Transportation, there is some discussion about various road safety and bicycle lanes. Human resources, there was a request to engage more with our local municipal partner staff via events. Tourism, there was a, for a request to fund areas that improve tourism initiatives with like park benches and signage and that we do through our C I P program. Hospice, there was some more comments related to funding the capital project in hospital as well, more comments related to funding their capital project. And these are all provided for you in appendix C, if you want to look at a full overview of those. So the recommendations are provided today for you in order to make your decisions related to the budget. That the membership for SCORE be approved at thirty thousand. That the additional funding for STEPAC membership in the amount of ten thousand be approved or not approved for the twenty twenty four budget. At the twenty twenty four budget outline in the proposed draft budget document, which is in appendix A. We will tidy that up, take the drafts off and make that the final document with the proposed tax rate of three point seven nine percent. And I have provided the budget bylaw today, should there be no further changes to the budget, which is provided as appendix D, twenty twenty four oh seven. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I do have my friends from the executive leadership team here so that if there's anything I can't answer, they certainly will be able to do that.
Okay, Jennifer, thank you very much for that presentation. A lot of work has gone into this from not only yourself and your your finance department, but the senior leadership team. At this point, I also want to thank the the budget committee for their input on this and the general public for any consultation that they brought forward as well. The one thing I do want to note, and I thank you for providing the the bylaw. But I'm thinking that as per procedure, the bylaw will not be considered today. So I would say the council just consider it for information. It'll be brought forward at a future meeting. That's standard practice. And at this point, I'm going to open it up to council members, your comments, questions, concerns? And let's have a discussion. So Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just some concerns, I guess maybe it's a misunderstanding on my part. I'm not sure. I kind of gathered through the committee process that the two large asks from the hospital and hospice would be discussed by county council today. And still support both. I think it should be included in some way, whether it's a reduced amount. But my understanding was the hospital asked for two hundred and fifty over ten years was a concession on their part, not five hundred over five, which would change that aspect of it. But I think it behooves us to put some money into this. The reality is, I think this started with the McGinty government, the downloading of some of our costs to with hospitals at that point that hasn't changed over many years. That that download has happened, I think that's reality. And I think we need to recognize that reality. Yeah, it probably should be a provincial problem, but it's turned into our problem. I still feel that we should have a discussion about these two options and whether it's the full amount or a reduced amount, but I think we have to do it in some way.
All right, thank you for your comments, Deputy Warden. Anyone else? Counsel Crockett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to, I guess, a comment, a number of comments. I I want to support the the suggestion made by Deputy Warden Jones that we should be discussing as as a council, the inclusion of funds for supporting the M R I project and the palliative care project as well. No doubt, the budget committee had to face some very difficult decisions. And I can understand the fact that they would leave these out. But as as Deputy Warden Jones mentioned, the ask of five hundred thousand, this is the first time I've seen that. You know, I've heard the requests from the hospital for two hundred and fifty thousand, which would reduce the the amount considerably that the county would have to be good for. There's a lot of discussion about the budget and about core values. And sometimes the word mandated requirements for the county are mentioned. We do carry a number of items in the county that are not mandated. The library being one of them, it's not a mandated requirement. However, I would be the first to say we have to do it. But, you know, we, we need to support this this hospital. I looking at the the comment made that discretionary kinds of payments or discretionary kind of support is equivalent to toys at Walmart. But I really don't think that, you know, when we're looking at M R I or we're looking at palliative care, that they really are something that, you know, you can equate to to toys. And so that my comment. I do have a question, however, on page thirty nine and forty of the agenda. It talks about option two. And the statement is, and maybe I've missed it somewhere. The statement says, use of the growth reserve in option number two was a suggested course of action in order to maintain the county's historical support of hospital capital needs. That that implying that option two includes support for hospital capital needs? I did not see the that figure anywhere else other than this. So is that, I'm not sure what that means.
Jen, would you take that one, please?
Through Mr. Warden to Counsel Crockett. At the presentation provided by the hospital, it was their suggestion that we would take the six hundred thousand that we would plan to flow through into the county budget and not reduce the tax rate. It would go to the core. Uh, budget and not reduce the tax rate, it would go to the core. It would go to the hospital uh to fund the hospital um capital project, so the rate pairs would not. Um, gain that l- lower tax rate. I I don't have anything in the budget right now for hospital and hospice.
Just to clarify, uh, Counselor Cookett, uh, what uh the suggestion was rather than uh, so rather than uh. Attributing the full portion over to the growth rate, you would use part of that to fund these discretionary programs. You would still be looking at a three point seven nine percent tax rate. And that would take care of twenty four, then we'll see what happens in twenty five. Now, I, I think uh we've got some valuable discussion going on here, I'm going to be a devil's advocate, and I'm going to throw this out there. And ask uh, is council prepared then to fund expansionary programs in the other hospitals that are used by county residents? I'm talking Newbury, I'm talking Tulsa, Burg. Deputy Warden.
I guess uh, uh, Mr. Warden, uh, we have no control over that, no more than we have control over our long term care homes, who comes into our long term care homes. So I, I think that's really irrelevant to to some degree, um, yes, it is an issue, but it's, it goes both ways, right? Uh, people come to us as well, London, down to Saint Thomas all the time, so.
Well, thank you for that, I, again, I'm just throwing the, being a devil's advocate out here. Uh, we do participate in a lot of healthcare funding in the county, perhaps is uh something that we inherited, as you say, through the McGinty days. Or even the Harris days, uh, but we do support long term care to the extent of over five point eight million. We support uh ambulance care well over five million, uh, Southwest Public Health, one point eight million, or that's what the ask is. The uh health recruitment partnership, I believe, is it one point two nine, is that what we're asking, Jen?
Uh, health recruitment is a hundred thousand.
A hundred and, yeah, but it's, it grew from seventy thousand.
Yes.
It's up, it's up. Point I'm trying to make is, we're assuming a larger and larger role all the time. And I agree with the consensus perhaps around the table, that it really isn't funded appropriately, uh, the, the property tax bucket. It should be from an ability to pay bucket, but we are nonetheless in the healthcare business. Counsel Noble.
Uh, Mr. Warden, um, well, I, I see that the hospital is important and and planning is very important. There's also an email that's circulating right now that the uh, the hospital is planning on building a new hospital across the street. I just got wind of that this week, so if we're going to spend some time doing some planning and and giving a bunch of money out, maybe we should have the rest of the facts. I don't know if anybody else was aware of that.
I was not aware of that, that's interesting, I don't know if anyone else is aware of that either, uh, Deputy Warden Jones.
Uh, I, I'm not sure where that email came from because my understanding of the planning horizon for hospitals over twenty years, so. Um, it's not time, anytime soon, that's for sure.
Right, any other comments? I realize we're talking about the big ticket items at the moment, uh, Counselor Shiger.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, my take on this is that I feel that we lack the tools to make decision. And um, and I will include everything from a two hundred and fifty thousand ask to. A one thousand ask, a ten thousand ask, a fifteen thousand ask that are here and there, we have grants, we have requests for sponsorships, later today. We have hospital. And we also have a growing growth reserve. So I can see, you know, outside looking in, for, you know, those who are uh in support of. All of these are very valuable, I have yet to receive a request that was not valuable and is not contributing. Something really important and needed in the community, so we get all of these requests over here. Everybody can see our growth reserve is growing and that's a good thing. What we are missing is a process to connect the dots. I do not feel comfortable acting subjectively and emotionally on, you know, here's fifteen thousand, here's six thousand. That we heard at the last meeting, or here's two hundred fifty. Where does that end, where does that begin and where does that end? So, I would like clearer and perhaps the best way, because where would that money come from? If we were to um support these requests, my guess is it would be from the growth reserve. That growth reserve has no guidelines around it, we started it. And now I think it's grown enough that it does require further discussion, so my suggestion would be to take a step back. Go into, spend some time figuring out the parameters of that growth reserve. I suspect because it's been connected to development charges, it's growth, you know, supports, pays for growth. You could argue that the needs of the hospice and the hospitals are related to growth. But again, these would all be, to me, a little bit arbitrary, subjective, individual. Um, we don't have around the table a clear agreement even on core versus discretionary. And it, it appears like there's uh some differences, there's some gray areas, so that would be my suggestion, is that we step back. Develop some policies and parameters around the use and criteria, around the use of the growth reserve. And then reapply, review all of these big asks, uh applying that criteria so that. It becomes a little bit more transparent, clear and objective.
Uh, before we go forward, I'm going to ask uh Jennifer. With respect to the growth reserve and the uh, the establishment of it, were there some policies and parameters put onto that? Or was it simply just a holding fund?
At the time it was established, it was established as in lieu of development charges. I think um there has been no specific parameters put on it and staff would welcome that because I think. As Counselor Jager said, the outside world is looking at that as a windfall. It's not a windfall, it's for our future development. And so uh we need to be looking at it from our, for ourselves to say, you know, this is for our future, this is what we are. Building so that we can accommodate all the things that are coming down the line and um to just. Give it away to, for, for immediate asks, wh- what, like what parameters and what. What guidelines are we doing that under? I also feel like, what is, is there a limit on the ask, like should there be some sort of, yeah, you, you can't come for. A large amount like that, like what are, what are the parameters, we don't really have any, any parameters to say, like. Is it going to go to outside groups, is it gonna just be for roads, is it gonna be, like, these are the things that we don't even have the answers to. And so it does, it is subjective and um I, I think that staff would welcome the ability to bring forward. A policy or a report that would um, even for all of our reserves, like. Capital reserve we use for capital purposes internally, but the growth reserve is definitely not. It's for capital, but what capital?
Before I get to you, Deputy Warden, I would agree with that, and I think perhaps a more definitive. Parameters around what the purpose of the fund is for would be helpful, definitely uh for help guiding discussion. Um, so, I would welcome that, actually. I think it would be valuable. Deputy Warden.
I agree wholeheartedly, I, and I'll get down the wagon again, uh. This is the third term of council, we've talked about development charges and I'll push it again, it's something we should have had. Two terms ago and this, we wouldn't really be having this discussion at this point, because like Jen pointed out. The lion's share of those development charges, what we can ask money for are exactly what we're discussing right now, so. I think it should be part of the discussion, uh, whether we go for development charges, because that's going to alleviate a lot of these, these discussions that. That there should be money set aside for this stuff and um, if we'd done it eight years ago, I think we'd be a lot better off at this point.
Okay, then a question back to anyone is, had we had development charges? They would be restricted funds as well, not available for non or for discretionary funding. Right, so this is where, if you want to apply development charges parameters to the growth reserve. Same thing, it's not available for non, you know, for non-core business, it would be for roads, ambulances. You say libraries, I assume that means purchases of materials, not buildings. Uh, I would just, and the other was long term care. But Algen is not a full service municipality, so that's one thing to keep in mind. I mean, I think it's valuable having that discussion again, no problem. But in lieu of the D C's, this is what the uh growth reserve is for, future growth. But we don't have any parameters on it, so perhaps it is wise to have that policy come forward. As well. Counselor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, in terms of uh, looking at the, at the growth reserve and looking at. Asks, those are two different kinds of things, and I agree that we should have some kind of a. Uh, some kind of a policy dealing with uh the amount of asks that we would entertain, um, you know. Town of Elmer just did that kind of thing this year, we had all kinds of asks and finally this year we said, we're going to put a cap on. The amount of money that we're going to provide for ask, so that's one area, the other area, the, the growth reserve, well. It could have its own uh kind of guidelines, but those are two separate things, however, none of that. Solves the issue of what we're going to do with M, with the M R I and the palliative care this year and and uh. I would like to put something on the floor that says we, we at least have a motion that we accept or deny. In terms of, of, of this, and so option number two, which. I understand really does include money for the hospital and for palliative care because it's taken out of the growth fund, does it not include money in option number two, there's nothing there? I, I thought that's what the warden said a while back, so I misunderstood that. So uh, in order to put this on the floor, you need a motion that says that we would um. Provide the hospital with uh, with, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for M R I and um. Palliative care for two hundred thousand, and I'd be willing to make that motion just to put it on the floor.
Okay, okay. Pardon me. Ah, Counselor Sloan, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, I apologize that I'm at a committee, I hope you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Thank you, Warden, uh, quick question through you, Warden, um, it says today that the hospital has five point seven raised of the eight million dollars asked. We're not talking about two hundred and fifty thousand, we're talking about two million five hundred thousand, if I'm not correct, is the ask, so that takes over their budget. As for hospice, um, there hasn't been an ask, maybe, although uh, Ms. Ford said there was some lobbying over the weekend by both parties. I want to say that I agree with company or with Counselors Gier, that what are the parameters, how, how important is one versus another? And if, if something like Terrace Lodge were in the mix, which is super important to us, I'm not sure how the fundraising for that went, whether they went to municipalities and asked them. But if you're looking at the, when the government offers uh money to individual sort of groups like the hospital. Um, there's a certain portion that has to be raised from the general public as opposed to other arms of government, at least that was the, the, the understanding that I had. Um, but to, to that point, I, I don't feel comfortable knowing how much we would either give to the hospital or to the hospice. One looks like it's going to meet their, in fact, surpass their ask if we give two point five million dollars uh over ten years. While the other one, I'm not sure if the five hundred thousand actually helps them meet their needs, so um, those are my comments, Warden, thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Jen.
Uh, to, to clarify, Mr. Warden, through you to Counselor Sloan, um, the hospice did come forward and ask for three hundred thousand for four years, so approximately one point two million was their ask.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Okay. Any, let's go back and deal uh with Counselor Cookett, uh, you put a motion on the floor specifically, have you got something written down, Catherine? Kind of. Okay, we are trying to get the intent of what you're asking. Now, considering that uh, there's been an ask out there of uh putting some parameters on what exactly a growth fund means. Are you sure you want to put that motion on the floor today? And I would have to ask for clarification from someone. My understanding was they were looking, the hospital specifically, for two and a half million over five years. Was there any documentation suggesting over ten years? I would, I would like to see that.
The original ask from the hospital, Mr. Warden, through you to council, was two point five, five hundred thousand, five years.
Yes.
This, the hospice came forward, one point two million, four years, three hundred thousand, those came to council, council sent that to budget committee. So then when we were in public consultation, um, the request from hospital was that they could. Compromise for ten years at two hundred and fifty thousand, um, the suggestion was to take it out of the funds that we. Were supposedly set aside for option two. Um, uh, that would not see any um change to the rate, it would still be three point seven nine percent, it would just be that. We would be flowing the money through to the hospital and to the, to the M R I pro- or to the hospital, M R I and the hospice fund. Um, those would not have any um benefit to the taxpayer or to the rate payer, so the rate payer would not see. Any gain or loss, the loss would be that the monies being sent would be not able to be used by the county in the future. So that's the opportunity lost on doing this, um, and proceeding in this manner. Um, so that's where we are, um, it's coming back as um, we did not proceed to put it in the budget. I want to ask council, is this a. Uh, a, a need today, like, do we have to make the decision today? And that's the question, like, we're holding up a budget process, we're holding up our tendering process. Um, and this is not value added to our process of the budget. But we certainly can address it in a future conversation. Um, and that's where I'm wondering if this is uh something that has to be dealt with immediately. Is it immediate need, is there a reason they're buying the equipment tomorrow, the hospice is being built tomorrow, I don't think that is the case.
All right, thank you for that clarification, I appreciate that. You know, we've often had uh conversations around the table and various members have said, stay in your lane. I guess we're trying to decide what our lane is. Uh, and I certainly appreciate the fact of lack of clarity on what the intended use of that growth reserve is. And uh, I, I would caution council of uh dispatching or using some of those funds without knowing exactly what the purpose of that fund is. I would say that uh, if uh council in the future, like a, next week, two weeks, whatever it is. After you get some parameters on what that growth fund's purpose is for, if they want to make an expenditure, they can. Counselor Whitner, and we still have a, a draft being prepared over here, but anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, I like the idea of putting a pause on this, we need, we need to know what the parameters are, we just can't make them up. Once we know what the parameters are, that it'd be easier to make a decision.
Mm-hmm.
We have lots of growth coming in, a lot of this growth is going to be subsidized by the taxpayer already. Poor taxpayers under a lot of pressure these days and we gotta be very cognizant of that, we just can't keep pushing it after the rate payers, so. Maybe this would be more for private donations, but I would support, we check and see what the parameter should be and make them clear, thank you.
Okay, now going back to Counselor Cookett, uh, have you got a draft? And let's hear the draft and then we'll confirm whether you want that on the floor or not.
Resolved that county council consider funding two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for ten years. For an M R I at the Saint Thomas Elgin General Hospital and three hundred thousand dollars a year for four years for the hospice as part of the twenty twenty four budget process.
Okay, Counselor Cookett, do you want that on the floor today?
I, I originally, thank you, Mr. Warden, I originally thought that the hospice request was two hundred thousand, which was my original motion, but since uh they haven't changed that. Um, I think it's, it's valuable to put this on the floor, although. Um, if it goes on the floor and gets defeated, we can't bring it up again, um, so um. I'm not sure at this point that I want to do that.
That's why I'm asking if you really want it on the floor today.
So if we, if we can defer the uh, the, the amount. Uh, and pass the budget and still come back to this. and still come back to this, then I have no reason to put this on the floor.
Okay. That's reasonable. Nods? Counselor Hens?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a comment, and I've long been a proponent of staying in your lane and doing what we're supposed to be doing around here. But having said that, senior levels of government, we know healthcare is, is not being funded properly. I see it in my own municipality. We are in the healthcare business. So I think this is an excellent discussion, probably long overdue. And I think we should continue this discussion. This is a difficult one. I find it extremely difficult. If I just put on my, my council hat, I, I wouldn't do it. But there's more to it than that. And I look at the residents in my municipality, in the county of Elgin. We deserve what the big centers have. We deserve what others have, such as an MRI or a hospice. We need to figure out what our role in all of that is. So I agree with the direction of this discussion that this should continue. I don't want to hold up a budget process because I think it's important. We all know what a timing of tendering is and getting our house in order. And I don't want to jeopardize that. So, and I also make the comment that I believe, from my perspective, the county is in a, an enviable financial position. We are able to set money aside. I would like to be in that position. So I think there is opportunity, not today, but down the road, to take a look at the request of the hospital and the hospice and see what we can do for them.
Okay. Do I get consensus around council? Are you comfortable with just setting aside the decision on funding those big requests and coming back at it later and moving the budget along? Counselors Gare, you, you had your hand up?
It's a yes, but I just wanted to be very clear then that the follow-up, to me, needs a sort of a three-pronged approach. And to what Counselor Cookett said, I think we need some parameters around asks. There are policies utilized by other municipalities where the requister has to, A, provide more information around budgets and percentages, but also where you can look at the percentages of the operating budget of the organization to which you're making the request. And you're not going to ask, for example, for more than 1% of the operating budget of that particular organization. Like, we can, we can look at that. So, so I would like, because I agree, we need to separate the asks and provide our requesters some parameters of what we expect to see. And, and then followed with the, the second, in parallel to that, are the parameters around the growth reserve. And also from staff hearing, what else, like, other than these requests, I presume there are other things that we need this growth reserve for. So what is the plan? Or, so if we were to fund those requests, what else are we not funding? We need to see not only parameters, but also projections. And the third aspect, because we talk about sort of us acting as a consequence of what the province is doing, well, we shouldn't be doing that sort of in a, in a victim kind of based approach. I think we need to engage with the province and say, here's what we're willing to do, but here's what the source of the problem is. So I would like us to be very visible, active, vocal in that conversation. We know AMO is pushing for a, a complete recalculation of the formula. We need to join that very visibly. And because right now, unless, we're going to keep spinning our wheels unless we go to the source of the problem. So I would like to see the follow-up taking those three prongs.
I would agree with you entirely on that one, particularly the fact that, why should they do it if we're willing to? So, and it's really interesting, you know, and I'm, I'm hoping that staff will come up with some parameters on, on the growth reserve. Maybe this is an avenue where even the Growth Planning Steering Committee might have an opportunity to help have some input as well. If, if staff are willing to, you know, well, hey, we'll just tell them where we want in and we'll do it. Okay? All right. So we call the, I don't want to call it a gentleman's agreement, but I mean, a, a council agreement without putting, do you need a motion on the floor to suggest that we will revisit the? Okay, let's do it that way. It's cleaner. Which brings us then back to the original recommendation of the budget from staff. Except you're going to drop out the bylaw. Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So one of the other items for decision today is around the, the STEPAC ask. So to that, I wanted to clarify, and on the report, it says that they have not received any increases for many years. So I wanted to know, could we know how many years exactly have they been frozen at 30,000? Hit the button.
Yeah, thank you, through you, Mr. Warden. In 2008, the funding was increased. I believe that initially it was 15 and it was increased to 30,000 in 2008. And then in 2010, it was put into the museum's operating budget to, I guess, to stabilize the funding arrangement we had and take it out of the granting process, given, you know, how, how essential the funds are to the operating budget of, of the center. So that's the timeline.
Okay. Just to clarify, since 2008, then we're moved to 30,000. So it's been considerable time. Counselor Shiger.
So thank you. So thank you for that information. So we put that over then 16 years. Then if there had been incremental increases, I think we'd be sending more at 41,000.
Probably.
So, so I want to take that in consideration. I don't like the fact that we would be, we freeze, then we jump by 10,000, then we freeze. This is not a smart way for, for us and for them also as an organization to try to plan their funding. So I will say that I don't like the process. But now with the additional information, I can see where this 10,000 request is, is coming from, and it appears reasonable. And unlike other items, this item is a budget line item, which council has considered not as discretionary as, as other lines, because we made the commitment in previous years. So I would support the increase by 10,000 and also recommend that we do not use this freeze, jump, freeze approach in the future.
I would agree with you. It's a lot easier if it was simply pegged to the CPI and adjusted annually. You know, it, from a planning perspective, you're right. It's difficult. Any other comments? Do you want to hear the recommendation forward and then have further discussion? Okay. Do you have a comment first, Jen?
I do. In my recommendation, I do not have a CPI increase allocated. So that might be something we would want to add to that particular one.
Of course, it's always dangerous to give without being asked. But anyway, Catherine, can we have the recommendation then, please?
Resolved that the membership for SCORE be approved at $30,000 for the 2024 budget year and that the additional costs for the STEPAC membership in the amount of $10,000 be approved for the 2024 budget year and that funding for the hospice and St. Thomas Elgin General Hospital MRI be considered at a later date in 2024 and that guidelines for the use of the growth reserve be established and brought forward for council consideration and that staff provide council with a report regarding projected uses for the growth reserve and that council advocate for a recalculation of healthcare funding, the healthcare funding formula and that the proposed draft budget outlined in Appendix A be approved with a tax rate increase of 3.79% and that council approve the preparation of the budget bylaw to be considered at the March 12th, 2024 meeting.
Yes, Counselor Shiger.
Just process-wise, and we haven't had a discussion on the SCORE item yet. I was wondering if we could actually consider each resolution independently, because this doesn't allow any nuance between
All right.
one recommendation and, and the other.
We can either separate the question or have the conversation on SCORE at this point. I have Counselor Sloan.
Thank you through you, Warden. Yeah, I'm, I'm not comfortable with that. You've got a, we're voting on a $10,000 ask extra for the art gallery, 2.5 million for the hospital and overall whether we want option one, two, and three together. So I have various views on those and they're not all the same. So I agree with Counselor Shiger.
Okay. So how do you wish to tackle this? Do you wish to separate the questions?
Please.
Do it that way? We can do it that way. Counselor Noble?
Through you, Mr. Warden. I'd like to talk about SCORE before we vote on the art gallery, just because if we're going to increase our ask for the art gallery and, and I think SCORE is very important. And if we're starting to decide where we're spending money, it's, I think those two conversations would be nice to have together.
Told you this was going to be fun. All right. We have a motion by Counselor Shiger to separate the question. And I assume Counselor Sloan, you're willing to second that. Have you got something, Catherine? All right. You don't really. Well, it's a request to separate the question, but it's cleaner. We do it this way. All right.
All right. Resolved that the membership for SCORE be approved at $30,000 for the 2024 budget year.
Okay. Put it on the floor. Let's have a mover and securer and then have a discussion. That work? Counselor Noble, Counselor Shiger. Okay. Discussion. Now we're all quiet. Okay. Pick me. Counsel, we, we could elevate you.
Yeah.
Put your name on a ballot.
I just want to make a comment on SCORE and on the museum, just so that council is aware. Those have been included in the 3.79%. So there's no increase. However, if you don't approve it, there would be a slight, very slight, and it works out to sense a decrease.
One thing to keep in mind regarding the, the SCORE membership, it's a two-year commitment, basically. If council chooses not to participate in the future, from an honor point of view and from the bylaws of SCORE, you're funding it for '24 and you're out in '25. That's how it works. Unless you wish to have some reputational risk and just bail. And I don't think that's an honorable way to do it because it's been done in the past and shameful. But going back to SCORE, back on November 14th, the executive director and the chair were present and gave an update. And I think they did a pretty, pretty good job of putting some metrics before you. And I printed them off last night, just so they were before me. They were looking at the financial impact from 2020 to 2022. And just for your recollection, the five counties fund the, the organization to the tune of, at that time, $25,000 a year, so 125,000. With that 125,000 membership fee, they turn around and they use that to leverage different grant programs and partnership funding arrangements. But over that two-year period, it was reported to us that they had leveraged 9.2 million of program funding into the region. Now, I realize that Elgin County is one of the few out there that lacks the community transit program, but SCORE was one of those organizations that actually coordinated this and got it spun up. And you have the Southwest Community Transit running now in nine communities across Southwest Ontario. Four of them are in the SCORE region. Elgin lacks. But I also digress at the, the Roma Conference sitting in front of the Minister of Transportation. He seemed very interested, considering the provincial investment that's going on in the region. He wanted to talk more about community transit. So I think there's an opportunity if we, if this council's thinking and wants to go down that road, we can have that conversation with the minister. Was, it was interesting that they sent his contact information out to me the next day. I think that's a positive sign. So just keeping that in mind. The ask is up 5,000 from what it was. But those fees were established in 2010 and hadn't changed for 14 years. I guess 13 years. It's more than just an advocacy group. It's a project management group. And yes, I'm, I'm very biased. Counselor Whitner?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm thinking SCORE this time would be a good investment. As no other point in time are we poised for so much investment and growth coming in this area. I don't know why we would shut it off now and lose some opportunities. Like you say, $125,000 invested leveraged 9.2 million. That's pretty good. We'd all take that for an investment. But I think I would support it because I don't know why we would shut it off now. We had more growth coming than we've ever seen. Thank you.
I suppose in fairness, I should have said it was 250,000, but, you know, over a two-year period. I would say that a couple of other pieces I want to add into it, and I should have before. We've got a pretty good act dev unit, fledgling act dev unit, getting off the ground and going. And they're doing, they're enthusiastic and they're good. We're not up to the same bench strength as our partner in the city of St. Thomas, but we also have the opportunity to harness and leverage some synergies with our neighbors. And just to keep in mind that our manager of Economic Development Tourism and Strategic Nations also chairs the Staff Resource Committee of SCORE. I think that positions us in a good spot to take advantage of some things. And if you're interested, the annual, the AGM is on Thursday in Tillsenburg. Be glad to have you. Yes, Counsel, Deputy Warden Jones?
Just a question with regards to the benefit of SCORE. What percentage of that growth came to Elgin County? Because I know none come to the South.
Well, that's a very good question, concerning the fact that Elgin bailed on SCORE for 10 years and wasn't part of it. But during that period, the former CN, well, they still are CN lines, were reopened and petitioned through the extensive lobbying from not only the scoreboard, but also from Cephus Pancho and the town of Tillsenburg. You have a short line rail provider which runs along the industrial lands and into St. Thomas, through Elmer, through Bayam, Malahide, Tillsenburg, and ends up at Cortland. It's only 27 kilometers long, but if I recall the numbers, they're talking about, oh, contributes roughly 170 million a year. So it affects total of seven companies at this point. But there's opportunities for growth, particularly in along the industrial lands in Elmer. It runs ICPG, you know, product out as well as future transfer. And I thought if I understood and recall it, those companies have just under 400 employees that they service. Short Line Rail is one of them, like the Geo Rail runs that one. Southland also runs the CP rails, which come north of the industrial lands back into Tillsenburg. So you've got two short rail providers that are one. The community transit program, I, yeah, we weren't part of it. We didn't get it. Bayam was part of it. You know what? We have a bus. It's only part-time, but it started at part of that private, you know, pilot program. And I would say that if we want our interest in an east-west community transit program, why would we reinvent the wheel? Go use what's out there. There's opportunities. Did it reach all the way across the county? No, not at this point, but there are opportunities to do it. And I would agree with Counselor Whitner. With all the growth that's coming, why wouldn't we use all the help and synergies development we can get? Counselor Thelye?
Thank you, Warden. Yes, there's, to speak to Deputy Warden's point there, there's There's, uh, opportunities that don't reach other parts of, uh, the county. But the opportunities that we have that could reach are something we don't want to close doors to. So I would support this as well. Done a little education in the short time here and time before, and, um, I just think, uh, once again, any anything we have going on that could help the rest of, uh, the county, that we should support it and move forward.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Counselor Cocket?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a quick, quick couple of comments. I was around when score started and I was also around when we dumped score. Uh, but I support the the thirty thousand dollars, uh, to 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 keep score running because we can't afford not to, I think, uh, because they will provide a, uh, a mechanism mechanism for growth. One question I do have is that statistics are kind of always interesting. You say the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars leverage nine point two million. Do we have a list of 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 all of the companies that were involved with that? We do have a list.
I have a programming resulting from advocacy efforts, partner supported, as well as, uh, financial and direct impact. That's from the November fourteenth, uh, presentation.
Right.
It's available online, uh, or you can have my copy if you want.
No, that's fine. I remember now. Thank you.
Any other discussion? We ready for the question? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it's carried. So the next one then is the STEPAC. You want to deal with that one? Okay, please.
Resolved that the additional costs for the STEPAC membership in the amount of ten thousand dollars be approved for the two thousand and twenty four budget year.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that one? Counselor Jiguer? Counselor Cocket? Okay. Any comments, questions?
So please.
Counsel Sloan?
Thank you, Warden, through you. Um, when we first got this request last fall, um, I Counselor Jiguer was going to give an update on exactly what it would be used for. Couple of points. Elgin County gives twice what St. Thomas does from the last time I looked on their light item for their budget. So our thirty thousand dollars is twice what St. Thomas gives, if not a little bit more. So we started the discussion by saying, okay, well, it shouldn't should have gone up, but it didn't go up. So now that it hasn't gone up, we're going to put it up thirty percent. And I'd just like some clarification. I know you're on the board, Counselor Jiguer. But what services aren't going to be offered or what services are offered that won't be offered with the extra ten thousand dollars like? I I have some issues with going from exactly to quote you, a jump of ten thousand dollars. So through the warden, I just wanted some clarification and a and a and an understanding just that I'm right, but St. Thomas, where the art gallery is located, gives less than fifteen thousand dollars. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, um. Counselor Jiguer?
Through you, Mr. Warden. I I won't comment on, uh, St. Thomas's decision and um, I think that's that's theirs to make and we don't need to make a proportional amount um, or contribution. Um, what I would say is that, yes, initially the jump, the ten thousand dollars surprised me, um, even as a member of the board, and we asked for a more specific request and a stronger business case. Um, that's not always easy to do, but I think it became very clear once, um, I learned that it was frozen since two thousand and eight. So what I have observed as a member of the board is the issue on wages, for example. So we're very, very fortunate on the board, um, to have staff that are dedicated, that have not had, uh, wage increases for many, many years. It's becoming very challenging to recruit um, anyone. And, uh, so we rely on volunteers. So we're increasing our reliance on volunteers, which is not, you know, a sustainable way to run an organization and um, we're all aware of the risks associated with that. So I think in, I again, when you put it in context, so context is everything. You put it in context of all their costs, insurance costs, we're all aware. Um, their, uh, and then their operating costs um, have all increased, um, more than two percent per year. So what would be cut is programming. And then it, that's how you you get less and less involvement if you have less programming um, available. But I am proud of how perhaps unlike other organizations I've seen and how they're being creative in generating revenue and using, making sure the facilities is used for many purposes and available in the community, which like I said, creates revenue. Their fundraising is, uh, very, very active. Um, and provides more than certainly our contribution at, um, at the county. So hopefully that clarifies further.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, additional questions? Comments? Deputy Warden?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a comment. It, I I remember when St. Thomas almost backed all the deal together and obviously they've come to the table to some extent, but it would be nice if it was an even playing field. Fifty fifty seems like where it should be, but I know Mayor Preston has made comments. They want to work together. Maybe maybe should any up for the, there's a good start.
Let's put that in, uh, in the arsenal of, uh, of a conversation of when it comes up. Um, I know that for various other, uh, programming, it's prorated based on population, but, uh, still even if it was prorated that way, it's a long way from where it should be, in my opinion, but that's all it is. And I agree with you. I should not be commenting on the city's uh, contribution. Counselor, uh, Noble?
Through you, Mr. Warden. I think it's important to say that we also do a very good job of supporting our museum. And and we do, we put a good amount of money towards that. And I feel like they're they're both a cultural um, investment, but, uh, I know we put a good amount of money to the to the museum. So I just want to say that.
Yeah, agreed, agreed. Any additional comments? All right. To have the question. Okay, then how about all in favor? I just all in favor then of funding STEPAC? Okay, any opposed? Okay, it's carried. Thank you. Next one?
That funding for the hospice and St. Thomas Elgin General Hospital MRI be considered at a later date in two thousand and twenty four.
Okay, do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Cocket and, uh, Counsel Thalia? Do we need any further comment on that? Or are we good? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it's carried. Next.
Resolved that guidelines for the use of the Growth Reserve Fund be established and brought forward for council consideration and that staff provide counsel with a report regarding projected uses for the Growth Reserve Fund and that council advocate for a recalculation of the healthcare funding formula.
Yeah, uh, mover and seconder. Counselor Henson, Counselor Noble? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Carried. One more?
Resolved that the proposed draft budget outlined in Appendix A be approved with a tax rate increase of three point seven nine percent and that council approved the preparation of a budget by law to be considered at the March twelfth, two thousand and twenty four meeting.
Do we have a mover and seconder? Deputy Warden Jones and Counselor Whitner? Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it's carried. Thank you. You take a piece and, uh, treat it like eating an elephant and you get through it. One bite at a time. There's one additional piece here that it's not on the, it's part it was from the Budget Committee. It didn't necessarily make it through to the, uh, recommendation stage, uh, for council's consideration, but I'm going to ask. There was discussion, uh, regarding the, uh, funding for Southwest Public Health, you recall. And if we go back to the Roma Conference where the minister made the commitment that, uh, they will fund the seventy five percent. We understand that with Southwest Public Health, that the provincial funding is only sixty two percent. There was a, uh, discussion around the Budget Committee of perhaps maybe we should add our voice to the course and send correspondence to, uh, the minister reminding them of the shortfall. Let's face it, it's costing us extra dollars to fund Southwest Public Health because the province isn't living up to their commitment. Is council interested in, uh, a bit of an advocacy effort on that behalf? Deputy Warden Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, so obviously we know the, uh, cost of inflation for the past year. The province in its infinite wisdom decided on one percent.
Yes.
And we still have mandated programs that we have to fulfill. And that's why we have an increase. That's put it as simple as possible. We have a mandated program we have to do and one percent isn't cutting it.
Correct. Uh, go back and
Yes, yes, we need to. I know all the health units are in the same boat. We're all lobbying, but I think municipalities should be as well.
Counselor Noble?
Through you, Mr. Warden. If the province cut their budget by one percent, how did we get a fifty five percent increase? That's my question. So somewhere along the lines, there's there's something that doesn't quite add up. It seems like a simple, obvious thing, but I don't know what it is. I'd like to have more information.
Well, it's simple, uh, even within illustrated within the, uh, the doc, the budget document itself of inflation over the last, uh, four years. And if the provinces only committed the one percent increase rather than the, uh, three point three that we had this year to six point seven nine the year before, like four percent before, you know what I'm trying to get at? It it soon grows pretty quickly and, uh, yeah. Deputy Warden?
And and the fact is, we have union negotiations and I would say probably ninety percent of the costs associated with Southwest Public Health is labor.
Okay.
A little bit of building in there.
Yep. So again, the question then before council is, uh, are you interested in a little advocacy effort? Uh, shall we prepare a letter? We may not get anything out of it, but, uh, at the same token, if we don't try, then we're complacent. Yep, Deputy Warden?
Just a further note, I saw an email from, uh, Cynthia this morning, uh, looking to set up times with the various councils to, uh, promote what's happening this coming year. So they're, uh, the health unit will be coming here at some point once they send a date.
Okay.
And that'd be a perfect chance to ask questions.
Thank you for that. So then I'm I'm going to ask, uh, our representatives for Southwest Public Health, do we hold off on that letter until after the Southwest or just send one off to Minister Jones? If that's the will of council? We need a motion for that? We should. Have, have you got some wording crafted for us? Thank you.
Resolves that council advocate to the Ministry of Health to fulfill their seventy five percent public health funding commitment.
Do we have a mover for that? Deputy Warden Jones, a seconder? Okay. Counselor Thalia, you had your hand up and I apologize. Okay. Any discussion on that or any further? Are we okay for the question? All in favor? Okay, that's carried. Thank you. We have been sitting here for well over an hour and three quarters. Anyone need a break? Let's take a ten minute break. I'll see if I can stagger up and find a coffee. And we will resume, uh, say within ten minutes. Better if I turn the mic on. Welcome back. And, uh, good discussion this morning so far. Uh, we are going to be proceeding on with section, uh, seven, but before then, Counselor Jiguer, you found some stuff during the break, just for clarification for council.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to clarify. Uh, I had a chance to pull up the budget for the contribution from St. Thomas in two thousand and twenty three was fifty thousand, five zero. So I don't want any misinformation floating out there as far as their contribution. I realize it is down in the past. I think they've given as high as, uh, contributed as high as seventy thousand. Um, and I can't confirm yet what, um, their budget, what they have passed for two thousand and twenty four. Um, but for the record, I wanted to clarify that. I doubt it is lower than fifty, uh, for two thousand and twenty four. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Perfect. Okay, let's move on then with, uh, section seven, Council Correspondence Item for Consideration, seven point one, seven one one was a letter from Mayor Andrew Sloan, Port Stanley two hundred Committee Co-Chair requesting a donation of fifteen thousand dollars for the Port two hundred celebrations. Counselor Noble, did you have something you wanted to contribute to that?
Oh, yes. Um, could we defer this, uh, Caroline and Counselor Sloan are back?
That's entirely up to you if you wish to put that motion on the floor.
I would like to.
Anyone interested in seconding that? Counselor Whitner? All right. So a motion for, uh, deferral? Counselor Jiguer, you'd like to comment first?
Yes, please, Mr. Warden. Um, since there is a bit more time, could I also request that, uh, the the requests come with more information?
Yep.
At the risk of sounding repetitive, I think we need context. We need a budget. We need, what is fifteen thousand? Um, where does that fit? And on our side, what is our policy? Um, or maybe this is one another area of policy we need around sponsorship. But, um, I think more information on the budget of all the the programming that's planned for the festivities would be appreciated.
Thank you for that. Uh, Deputy, uh, Warden Jones?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Warden. I would echo the same. Uh, we require this of any, uh, requests that we have a budget and understand what where the money is going.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, I know that in a casual conversation with Counselor, uh, Noble, I suggested, you know, it'd be cleaner if it was a motion coming from central Elgin itself, but just sending you home with that idea. So the motion is on the floor for deferral. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. So seven two, the consent agenda, we have, uh, three items before us, four items, excuse me. The, uh, resolution from the northeastern Manitulin Isle and the Islands requesting the province implement funding stream for wastewater and water systems. Seven two two from the township of, uh, McMurray, Montieth, lobbying the provincial government to amend the Municipal Act and Municipal Elections Act prohibiting people with unpardon criminal record from becoming a candidate in a municipal elections. Seven two three, Mike Baker Retirement Invitation and seven two four, the Elgin Clean Water two thousand and twenty three annual report. Does anyone have any comments, uh, or questions regarding any of the, uh, items on the consent agenda? Uh, Deputy Warden Jones?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. I guess, uh, from, uh, northeastern Manitou and and the Islands, uh, obviously, uh, infrastructure money is desperately needed. I think any place in a smaller, uh, on, uh, rural, uh, small rural Ontario, I think it's, uh, I I would support this.
Okay. Any other comments? Other than again, just to highlight the, uh, the invitation from March the twenty eighth, if you're available, I would recommend, uh, please drop in. Mike's been a mainstay around here for a long time. And, uh, and then I would also like to highlight the Elgin Clean Water Program. The county does support this and, uh, they do some pretty good work and, uh, I congratulate them on what they're able to achieve in two thousand and twenty three. So if you got a motion to capture, thank you.
Resolved that correspondence items seven point two one to seven point two four be received and filed. Or did you?
And?
And that the county of Elgin, Corporation of the County of Elgin, support the resolution from the town of northeastern Manitouland and the Islands to advocate to the provincial and federal levels of government to make them aware that rural and small urban water and wastewater systems are financially unsustainable and advocate to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Rural Ontario Municipalities Association and the Federation of Canadian Municipalities to examine the unaffordability of water and wastewater system operational costs is systematic, is systematic and prevent provincially and nationally. Sorry, that the unaffordability of water and wastewater system operational costs is systematic and provincially, provincially and nationally.
It's a mouthful. Uh, willing to move that, uh, Deputy Warden? And, uh, Counselor Henshaw, second? All in favor? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Uh, section eight, other business statements and inquiries by members, uh, just to, uh, put a quick note out there that if you haven't already, there is a card circulating for, uh, Counselor Latham. Please sign it if you have an opportunity. Uh, secondly, I had some, uh, text correspondence with, uh, Mrs. Latham last evening. She tells me that, uh, Richard has been moved out of intensive care. He is, uh, still a long row ahead of him. Uh, a lot of challenges, but he's, uh, has his phone back with him. If you wish to reach out by phone, or he is even receiving visitors. I wish I knew which hospital. I assume it's, uh, Victoria, isn't it?
Thank you, Warden. Uh, Victoria Hospital, fifth floor. At least that's where he was. So I'm not sure we got moved to now, but that's where he was.
Okay. So we, uh, we'll keep Richards, uh, in our thoughts and, uh, wishing well. Yes, uh, Counselor Hens?
Yeah, Mr. Warden, uh, to council, I actually did reach out to Richard and he answered the phone yesterday. And you can imagine sitting in a hospital room as long as him. So get a minute, give him a call. He'd love to chat. There's not much else to do where he is.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any other statements or, uh, from members? Okay. Notice of motion? Matters of urgency. Uh, we do have an addition.
Result that a closed session item related to a personnel matter under municipal act section two thirty-nine two be added to the closed session agenda.
Okay, this will require a two-thirds vote in order to, uh, put it on the agenda. Uh, I know the curiosity is peaking. So do we have a mover and seconder? Deputy Warden Jones and, uh, Counselor Shiger? All in favor? That's carried. Okay, so now we'll be moving into closed meeting items.
Resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the municipal act to discuss the following matters under municipal act section two thirty-nine two. Closed meeting item number one, closed meeting minutes, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Closed meeting item number two, boundary adjustment matter verbal under sections H and K. And closed meeting item number three, personnel matter under section B.
Okay, mover and seconder, please? Counselor Widner and, uh, Counselor Noble? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. All. Welcome back. Uh, motion to rise and report?
Result that we do now rise and report.
Do we have a mover and seconder, please? Deputy Warden Jones, uh, Counselor Hens? All in favor? That's carried. Closed meeting item number one, the closed meeting minutes.
Resolves that the closed meeting minutes from the meeting held on February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four be adopted.
Mover and seconder, please? Counselor Noble, Counselor Hens? All in favor? That's carried. Closed meeting item number two, the boundary adjustment matter verbal.
Resolved that the confidential verbal report from Warden Ketchabah be received for information.
Mover and seconder, please? Counselor Thalia and, uh, Counselor Noble? Hopefully I'm pronouncing that correctly. Close?
Through the warden, yeah, Thalia, I E R is I A.
I A.
So.
Thank you. Okay. Perfect. It's always good to learn something. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Motion nine three. Yes.
Folds that the confidential verbal report from the chief administrative officer be received.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Deputy Warden Jones, Counselor Noble? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Section eleven, motion to adopt recommendations for the committee of the whole?
Result that we do now adopt recommendations of the committee of the whole.
Do we have a mover and sector? Counselor Hens? Counselor Noble? Must be hungry. All in favor? Carried. Sorry about that. I, I just mean, you're so quick to, uh, second, uh, motions and move us along. I thought that was great. Yep. Uh, consideration of bylaws, section twelve.
Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the municipal council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin. Resolved that bylaw number twenty-four oh eight now be read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Widner, Counselor Cocket will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Which brings us to the adjournment motion.
Resolved that we do now adjourn at eleven twenty-eight AM to meet again on March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four at nine o'clock AM.
Okay, Counselor Widner will move. Deputy Warden Jones will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Thank you for joining us today and thank you for your interest in local governance. Have a first spring thunderstorm day. Have a good one. Thank you.